All right, I'll call the June 3 Planning Commission meeting to order. Pledge allegiance, will everyone please stand and Commissioner Kitting, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Everybody ready?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Staff, roll call please.
All commissioners are present with the exception of Vice Chair Lowry and Commissioner Elmore, who are excused this evening.
All right, and I must have a case of the cooties because everyone's afraid of me sitting far away. Hey, guys. All right, public comments, this is the time we'll take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to comment on any items tonight, please call 1-669-900-9128. That is a new number, so again, that is one, I guess you don't even need that one these days, but that's 669-900-9128. You will be prompted to enter the meeting ID, which is 973-0395-9657, followed by pound. I hope that's on their screen, which I'm being told it is, so you should see that on your screen, but again, that's, meeting ID is the number is 973-0395-9657, followed by pound. During public comments, press star nine to add yourself to the queue and wait for city staff to announce the last four digits of your phone number, and press star six to unmute your line when it is your turn to speak. You can also join using the link provided on the agenda. During the public comments, use the raise your hand function, raise hand function in the participants window and wait for city staff to announce your name and unmute your line when it is your turn to speak. Comments are limited to three minutes or as otherwise directed. First, we'll take comments from anyone in the council chambers, and Mr. Mosher, you're the first.
Thank you, Chair Wagen, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jim Mosher. As you may recall, at your last meeting, you had a rece, you received and filed a director's determination about hotel conversions, which I see from the tentative meeting schedule is coming back to you on appeal on July 8. It will be interesting to me to see what you think of it on a second viewing of it, because all the outcome may be desirable, the process seemed extremely flawed. As you may recall, the director says that when the voters in 2006 approved specific numbers of hotel rooms at four hotel sites, they actually meant to allow 30% of those hotel rooms to be built as permanent residences, which right here in Newport Center adds 250 new residential dwelling unit entitlements. When the city council currently, because of green light, could only add 28. It's interesting that the director has greater power over our general plan than the city council seems to have. The comment I wanted to make is that I don't think you or probably anyone else would even known that the determination had been made or was appealable, had it not been on your agenda, which I appreciate. These determinations are filed on the city website under something called administrative approvals. I don't know if you monitor those or not. I thought this was kind of a one-off thing, but I noticed that three weeks later, we have a second director's determination made on May 21 that had to do with the setbacks in the Bay Shores community. And in this determination, the director is declaring that the setback map for Bay Shores, which was approved by the city council in 2010, was not the map that the city council actually wanted to approve. Now, once again, the outcome may be very desirable, but the process seems extremely flawed, because this planning commission, some of you have been here long enough to know, has seen changes to setback maps brought to you and then to the city council so that the map can be formally changed. In this case, the determination said that wasn't feasible because it would take two years to use the normal process. I looked back in 2015, a similar setback map correction was initiated by the city council in January 12, 2016, came to here to the Planning Commission in February, and was adopted by the city council with the new map in April, April 12, 2016. Took not two years, it took three months for the complete process from start to end. So I'm wondering why we are now bypassing the normal process, both for amending our general plan and changing our zoning code and having these obscure director's determinations posted obscurely on the city's website instead. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other comments in the room? Okay, I'll go over to the Zoom format and see if there's any public comments.
No comments, Chair Wagen.
Okay, great, thank you. I'll move on to our next item, which is requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests?
None at this time.
Okay. Consent items that I'll move on to. Item number one are the minutes of the May 6, 2021 meeting. And we also have another item that is related to the Ibbotson Trust encroachment, and do commissioners want to poll any of those items for discussion? I think there were some comments from Mr. Mosher that could be added into the minutes. Commissioner Rosin.
I guess I just want to know the protocol in terms of item number two.
Sure, I think, I think when you do consent calendar, usually if the council has consent calendars, you know, 15, 20 items, and then they would just move to do that, and then if a member of the council wanted to poll consent item, then it would be up for discussion. So I guess that would be, if you wanted to discuss that item, we could have you poll that, is that correct?
That's true, if there's a, if there's a need for a discussion. Tony Bryant is the city traffic engineer, he'll be able to answer those questions.
And I can, I can open it, you know, comments to the public to start, and then if you want to go with that, and then if you think that that polling it is worth.
Chair Wagen, if I may, why don't we go ahead and if the minutes are satisfactory, go ahead and make a motion on that item, and then if the commission would like to have a discussion on item number two, then do so.
Perfect, that works fine. Do you, does anyone want to make a motion on the minutes with Mr. Mosher's edits?
I'll make a motion to approve with Mr. Mosher's comments.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, great, I'll call that vote on that.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then as far as item two goes, do you want to hear some, perhaps a staff item or just specific questions maybe? Commissioner Rosin.
Why don't I address this to staff, Simone, I guess, for whatever reason, historically, I thought these were something that was part of the, the public hearing, rather than going into the consent calendar portion, so that was just my reason for questioning it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosin. These encroachments have, you know, I think we just started putting, giving them to the Planning Commission within the last two years. Usually they go to the city council because there are city council policies. So the policy changed, so now the council deferred that authority and gave authority to the commission to either approve or deny these encroachments through council policy. And that way, the council could remain as an appellate body. Staff has done a thorough review through the item, they're supportive of the item, Public Works Department has reviewed it, and so for, from a city staff standpoint, we can put it as a public hearing item or as a consent item. We typically just put these encroachments as a consent item.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Any, any questions, Seth?
I don't have any further comments.
Okay. Any other commissioners want to ask anything of staff on that one? Okay, I'll go to the public. If, again, if you've called in on any item via Zoom, press star nine and use the raise your hand function. I'll take any comments in the council chambers. Any, none, anyone on Zoom?
No one, no comments on Zoom.
Okay, I will call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item PA 2021-088.
I'll second that with a comment that I thought the applicant did a very good job drawing their own landscape plan and sight lines and everything else. You don't always need to hire a high-priced landscape architect or an engineer. Very good job.
Cool. I'll call for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, this is our only public hearing item tonight, and this is item number three, the BSP Bristol LLC Medical Offices, PA 2020-052. Site location is 1400 and 1420 North Bristol Street. And as a reminder, if you've called in via Zoom and you want to comment on this item, please press star nine and use the raise hand function. Staff, presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair Wagen, and good evening to the commission. My name is David Lee from the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting BSP Bristol Medical Condominiums at 1400 and 1420 Bristol Street North. So here's the project site, highlighted in red. As you can see, it's located on the corner of Bristol Street North and Spruce Street. The project is designated by the general plan as general commercial office and is zoned as PC 11, which is the Newport Place Plan Community Text, and is specifically designated as industrial site 3A within PC 11. Just to note that industrial site 3A allows for both professional office uses and medical office uses. It's approximately, the lot is approximately 100,000 square feet, and the existing office buildings, which are these two in yellow, total to be 37,515 square feet. There is an existing parking lot on site, which is 154 spaces. As you can see, highlighted in green, those are office buildings that surround the site. Just to give quick background on the, on the project site, those buildings were constructed in 1978. Some tenants today are property management offices, as well as engineering consultants and other office uses of similar nature. There also was a modification permit done in 1977 for compact parking spaces. Since then, there hasn't been any, has not been any discretionary approvals on this site. So the request tonight is threefold. First is to convert the use from a professional office use to medical office use. As I stated earlier, medical office is a permitted use within this PC. However, because there's a proposal to reduce parking, a conditional use permit is requested tonight. The second phase is to convert the rental units to condominiums for ownership, separate ownership, and that requires a condominium conversion and a tentative parcel map. And finally, since the project does exceed 300 average daily trips, a traffic study is required and has been prepared for this project. So a parking reduction is requested. The existing parking requirement for professional office today is 167 spaces. There's 154 spaces provided, and therefore today, there's a parking deficit of 13 spaces. With the conversion to medical office, the parking rate increases, which increases the required parking to 188 spaces. The provided parking, as proposed by the applicant, will reduce to, from 154 to 150 spaces. This is necessary because there's a lot of non-compliant aspects to the parking lot, things such as backup widths and drive-out widths and parking stall widths. They're just not compliant to today's code, so a redesign of the parking lot would really increase the maneuverability and just the circulation and safety for the site. So that's been proposed by the applicant. So with the, with that reduction, it brings the parking deficit to 38 spaces, which is why the CUP is being requested today. So in justification of the parking study, of the parking reduction, the applicant provided a parking study, which provided weekday parking surveys, pre-COVID numbers, where it surveyed five comparable Orange County medical office buildings. With all the data, they extracted the number, it's 3.87 spaces per 1,000 square feet was the going rate for these comparable office buildings. And with that rate applied to this site, the parking demand at its peak times is 145 spaces. Again, there's 150 spaces provided, so that accounts for 96% of the parking lot during peak times. I want to note a specific condition of approval, and that is that the applicant shall submit an additional parking study with live parking counts no earlier than six months after certificates of occupancies have been obtained for 70% of the medical office spaces. So after they sell 70% of the medical offices, and they've been operating for six months, we want to see, the staff would like to see a parking study, which, which shows that there is additional parking remaining on site, so they can sell the additional 30, the remaining 30% of the site to be medical office. The traffic study that was provided was required because the project generates approximately 1,300 average daily trips. It studied 13 intersections for potential impacts, and it concluded that the intersections will continue to operate at satisfactory levels of service, and there's no improvements necessary in relation to this project. Staff has made all the findings in the resolution for all the entitlements. The, the project site is compatible with the surrounding office uses. It's a existing office going to medical office. The buildings are suitable for medical condominiums. Building Department has done an inspection recently and has just identified minor accessibility upgrades that will be required. There's also a waiver requested of individual utility connections, which will not be detrimental, and has been reviewed by our utilities department. And finally, as I discussed previously, the parking and traffic are adequate. With the reduction in the parking spaces and the redesign of the parking lot, there's going to be improved circulation for the site, and the traffic study showed no impacts. Therefore, the staff recommends the, the commission hold a, conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and adopt resolution PC 2021-015, which approves a condominium conversion, tentative parcel map, conditional use permit, and a traffic study. Once again, my name is David Lee, I'm available for questions, and the applicants are here tonight, Matt Haugen and Phil Greer, parking consultant, RK Engineering is here, as well as the traffic consultant, Gandini Traffic Consultants. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, David, appreciate that. Commissioners, do you have any questions with staff? Commissioner Kitting.
Yes, I have a few questions. What's the handicap requirement for an office building with medical? Handicap stall, I should say.
It's a, it's a, it's a higher requirement, I want to say it's one per 20 spaces.
How do they, how do they meet that?
They're, they're going to have to provide a full site plan and submit it to the building department for review, but we count the ADA spaces towards the required parking.
188?
We, we count the handicap parking spaces.
Right.
Towards the, the requirements for parking.
Okay, so it's not on the plan we saw?
Correct.
Okay. In the future, would you have them, before they get to this body, a correct site plan? We don't even have a correct site plan with how the layout will be, how the stalls will be.
I think we have a backup slide.
Well, we didn't get it in our packet, is what I'm saying.
I understand.
And so, you know, that's, in the future, let's get this thing to us accurately, number one. Where's the overflow parking going, Steph?
There is no overflow parking proposed.
There's no street parking on either side.
Correct.
Okay, so it could filter in neighboring office properties, right?
Theoretically.
Okay. I was interested in the medical office study, five locations, none of which were in Newport Beach. Did staff inquire why they didn't study the ones in Newport? I could name five right now that are underparked.
I think we would have to ask the RK Engineering.
Well, I'm asking staff. I mean, you direct them, I mean, if I was on staff and I saw that come in, I'd say Irvine and, you know, not, no, not even Irvine, because they're harder than we are, but all these Laguna, come on. Curious why we didn't require a comparative to Newport.
I don't know, if I want to have Tony Bryant, do you want to, you have the applicant? Yeah, the applicant review it.
All right, well, let's bring it up later, because this is staff and commission time. Staff, you referred to peak hour traffic study. What is peak hour for medical office? This is on page six. Bottom of the page.
Let's see, this is working. The peak hour for, I mean, when we study peak hour, I'm sorry, Chair Kitting, or Commissioner Kitting, when we study peak hour, we, we study the typical morning and evening peak hours in the traffic study. For medical, generally, it's more spread out over the day than a typical off, general office building, so we're seeing more across-the-day traffic flow for medical.
All right, because they referred to this in their other studies that it met code in those communities, in their, but they didn't define peak hour. Staff, is there an elevator in the, in the, in these two buildings? I didn't get out of my car to go look.
Yeah, Commissioner Kitting, yes, and it's, it's conditioned in the project that they're going to provide a gurney-sized elevator for medical offices.
A what?
A gurney-sized elevator that's required by the fire department.
Okay, so they would have to remodel to do that?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Those are my questions of staff.
Okay, any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Kleiman?
Thank you, yeah, just a couple of clarifications. First of all, I was unclear about the response to Commissioner Kitting's question about the handicap spaces. I would think that medical would have a higher requirement, and I, and I don't know if there is that site plan that we could take a look at here, but it, it does seem like you would lose more spaces, obviously, as those require more room than just a regular parking space.
So Commissioner Kleiman, you're correct, the handicap parking spaces for medical is at a higher rate, but we do count those spaces towards what is required for parking.
Okay, so that's what you meant, that that was already calculated at the 150 spaces that they're.
That's correct.
And that includes, and is consistent with the requirement. My other question is how that relates to the reference on handwritten page five to how many units there would be, 22 to 30. So I guess my question is, why the variance, and, and does that then change some of the requirements or some of the parking numbers that we're looking at, or is it purely square footage? And those units would change depending on what, like, how they're, they're, which buyers they're selling these to, and how much space they're carving out for each unit? How does that play out?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kleiman. Yeah, these, the parking doesn't change because it's based on the square footage of the building, so it's not based on the number of units. And right now, we're just doing a tentative parcel map, so we're not, it's not final on, on the actual subdivision at this moment. They'll go through a final map process later, and it gives the tenant, and the owner flexibility of how they divvy up the tenant's spaces. And so they've, they've identified the range between 22 and 30 as a preliminary number to go with, but it'll get hashed out at the final map process.
So I guess where I'm going with this is sort of begs the question, why not just reduce the number of units and/or the corresponding square footage so that we would be, or they would be compliant? Because it seems like it's a pretty big deficit, particularly for medical. And I would definitely echo Commissioner Kitting's concerns, you know, most of the medical office buildings that are in Newport are underparked, and that's particularly problematic for, when you think about the type of people who are typically going in and out of these buildings and these parking spaces on a daily basis.
Yes, Commissioner Kleiman, so changing the number of units, it, it just, it wouldn't affect the parking at all. This is an existing, existing office space, they're not going to add any square footage to it, they're not going to remove or make any modifications to the square footage of the overall building, so that parking requirement is, is solidified. So parking won't change, it's just, it's just kind of dividing the, dividing the airspace between, between each unit, gives them flexibility in the future to do that. If a, if a suite wanted to come in and make it bigger, want a bigger space, they might be able to divide it, have bigger space, but it wouldn't change the overall floor area of the building or the parking requirement.
So is the biggest reason for that differential just that the code requirements have changed since the building was initially or originally approved, or, again, that's just a, it's just a big number deficit to swallow?
Yeah, so when, when the, when the building was approved, there was 167 spaces, and so they provided it at the time. Over the years, since 1978, there's been many re-stripes of the parking lot, which is why today it's 154 spaces, and there's, you know, there's not many records for that. So it's just the existing condition that we have today. And then you're going to increase the parking requirement when you go to medical office, which is why it increases the deficit today, so that's the reason why the deficit is larger with this conversion.
So it's the combination of the two, the conversion and bringing it to today's code?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rosin?
I had a question about, and I, and I heard, David, I heard you say it, and I appreciate it, that in 1977, there was a, a compact parking arrangement, forgotten the exact language. And I understand the idea behind bringing it back to code, but is there a reason that we would want to remove additional parking spaces when maybe potentially it, even though it's only four spaces, it's, there's a deficit, and I'm trying to find a way to get some additional spaces in there? Was that a consideration, or could it be? Use a substandard?
So the.
Wish I'd use better language than that. Parking standard?
Sure, yeah, thanks, Commissioner Rosin. So the, the parking lot at the time was approved for the compact spaces. Those compact spaces are not compliant to today's code, and as I discussed earlier, they've re-striped those stalls since 1978, and so they've lost the privileges for the grandfathering. And so there's kind of an issue with that, and so, and additionally, just overall functionality of the parking lot and usability, it's hard to back out on certain areas because it's so narrow, and the stalls are very, very narrow, and the drive aisles are narrow, so it's, it's hard to maneuver. So this, this proposal would just make the overall safety and circulation better in the site.
And I'd like to add, Commissioner Rosin, compact spaces are just not allowed in our code right now.
That makes sense, and cars, for the most part, are a lot smaller than they were in '77, but at least that's what I remember. I did have a question about the, the condition of approval about the gurney-sized elevators. There, if there's going to be two because of the two separate structures, I was surprised to hear that that wasn't calculated in, in terms of the loss of square footage. It seemed like it would be meaningful, potentially, and so I just wanted to hear your thoughts on whether or not that could be incorporated, or what the benefit might be for the applicant.
Commissioner Rosin, thank you. You know, I, I don't think we considered the, the extra size of the cab for the gurney-sized elevator in the floor area calculation, but I'm not, I'm not certain that it's going to change the parking requirements that much. At most, maybe one, if it is, I just don't, I don't think it's going to move the needle that much.
Commissioner Klostermeyer?
David, thank you for your presentation. I had a question about the condition that you had in, in the staff report that you presented, that when 70% of the units are sold after six months of occupancy, you would do another parking study. And I'm wondering if the findings of that parking study are such that 100% of the stalls or more are being used? What would be the next steps?
So if, thank you, Commissioner Klostermeyer, for that question. So, if, thank you, Commissioner Klostermeyer, for that question. So, based on the calculation, looking at the parking study, 70% was the conservative number, conservative number that we took, that, you know, if, worst-case scenario, it wouldn't fill up 100% of the parking lot. But if the 70% came out and the parking situation was not, it was not suitable for 100% medical, it was only suitable for that 70%. And, you know, it was being overparked, and we have issues. The director has the authority to cap it at the 70% of tenant improvements, and there would be no more permitted from that day on, from that, after the results of the study. So, we would not accept any more conversions to medical office on the remainder of the project. It would just, and those remaining 30% would just be standard offices, which don't require the impacted parking rate.
Okay. I haven't backed into any of the math on that. I assume staff has done that to understand if 70% of the units are medical and then 30% are professional office. I guess, I guess I'm just wondering what the parking deficit in that situation would be.
Commissioner Klostermeyer, we could go ahead and just do that math. We just don't have it available right now.
Okay. I just had a quick question. There was a letter from a neighboring property owner about potentials for the overflow, if there were issues with parking. Is there, is there something that we could put in our conditions that said that the applicant has to provide, you know, some coordination with the neighbor to prevent that? Or, I'm looking at an image on Google Earth, and it doesn't appear that you could just drive from one parking lot to the next. You would have to come out onto the street and then, you know, turn in. But is that something that just kind of has to be done on the side, where the applicant would need to work with the property owner to maybe help provide signage for them, or, you know, do something that prevents it, since, you know, it could potentially impact the neighbors? But I just was curious if that's something that can be conditioned, or if that's something that has to be done privately?
Yes, Chair Wagon. So, in discussions with the ownership group and with Mr. Greer, I know that they are in discussions on putting up warning signs for parking in the neighboring lots. And he's also discussed with me, you know, enacting CCNRs with the tenants of the condominiums, assigning certain spaces and ensuring that they have their, each have their own spaces. But I believe Mr. Greer could elaborate on that.
Sure.
And that is something, you know, you can condition for maybe the signage to be placed on the site.
Okay, okay. And then, if there was some type of parking management plan down the road, they would have to work with the neighboring tenants to find if there's vacant parking spots, or, and there's a, Fletcher Jones has their overflow, which is right nearby. It might be gated or security reinforced, but perhaps that's even an angle, because it's not too, too far away. So, I think there's area to find if there needs to be excess parking that's available. So, I think that that is helpful for this specific site. Okay, I'll move on to ex parte communications with, starting with Commissioner Rosine.
I had a telephone conversation with the applicant's attorney.
Great.
I also had a telephone conversation with the applicant's attorney. Ken?
I had a phone call from the applicant's consultant. We didn't have time to talk about the project.
And I, too, had a conversation with the applicant's consultant. We discussed the merits of the project and if I had any questions, which I did not. Okay, I will open the public hearing and see if the applicant wants to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Philip Greer. I'm the attorney for the applicant. We have the applicant here tonight. We have the parking consultant here tonight. And I believe we have a traffic engineer here tonight to answer any more specific questions you might have. One thing I would like to state is regarding the neighbor, Mr. Light, he and I had a lengthy conversation today. It was very pleasant, and we came up with several possible alternatives based upon how this project goes forward, including signage, including the applicant paying for towing service to monitor the lot, and also the applicant installing a fence perhaps between the two properties so that you can't just walk over the bushes. We think staff has done a wonderful job in terms of working with us to get the parking down. As Mr. Lee stated, this project, this building was built in '78, and we've had to deal with those parking issues and those restripings that we had nothing to do with. So, we come in at a disadvantage, but I think the parking proposal we have also, which in turn creates more space, makes it safer, gets rid of some of the narrow aisles and stuff, will benefit the project down the road. That's really all I have to say, unless you have any questions, I can answer.
Commissioner Kettin?
Mr. Greer, when did the current owner acquire the property?
It's been approximately a year.
Okay. And so, then there was, they looked at the potential for off, it was office, and they looked at the parking. And they tried to figure out, do we meet code? Anybody doing due diligence and buying a property would do that.
Yes, sir.
How many stalls are you short just for office right now? And how many will you be short when you reconfigure the lot to make it to code?
I cannot tell you the specific number we would be short if we kept offices. I can tell you, based upon our parking analysis, that we actually will have five additional spaces available, given the parking study, given what staff has provided you with.
Physical or just in general? Physical spaces?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I think the code, the staff said you need 188. You have 154? Is that right?
We have 150, based upon the-
You have 154, but four are going to be gone by the redesign.
Correct.
All right, so you need 38 to put this in all medical?
Correct.
Okay. 25% reduction.
Approximately, yes, sir.
Little bit more, if you do the math. All right. And, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, you, there is a direct driveway across, if you look on page 52 or 3, that aerial, directly into that adjacent property owner's driveway. So, I think that's going to be a potential nuisance for them, you know? Because if you can't find one in here, you're going to go to the closest driveway. It's directly across the street. That's all.
Well, you mean on, on the actual-
On the, yeah.
Street, street, on Spruce, across. I just was referring to the neighbor who wrote the letter to us that had the concern.
Right. But if you look over here, you can see the area right on Spruce. He's right across. I noticed the other ones had a fence around it, and they're very tight on parking, too. All right. Those were my immediate questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosine?
The question operationally, since there's not going to be individual meters, how does that work? Does everyone just pay a fair share? Or, there will be individual services? I think it was water?
There'll be, the CCNRs will limit the number of parking stalls any specific building, any specific tenant can have. So, by doing that, we can also limit how many, how many people can actually park there.
Okay, I mean, I apologize.
I think he was doing sewer and water and-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sewer, sewer and water will just come in, and it'll be a portion per tenant. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, the idea of having someone have three spaces that were identified just for them in a parking size, parking, parking lot of this size? I was trying to think about how operationally that might work, and I'm struggling a little bit with trying to find, you know, doctor whomever, and then trying to find those three spots. I'm not sure that that makes sense, but it'd be interesting to hear if there was any background on how that's worked in other locations.
I couldn't address it at this point, sir. I'm sorry.
I guess maybe if you were to say there were, you know, three to five employees per unit, and then you take that based on the parking, is that, am I, is that kind of what you're going for, Commissioner Rosine?
I was looking for, if you were going to assign parking stalls to a certain individual practice, how would you do that?
Oh, no, sir, we're not going to, you're not going to get a specific word. It's going to say Dr. Smith or Dr. Johnson. It's just going to be that. And so, I guess it's sort of on the honor system, but if, if Dr. Johnson has a larger space than Dr. Smith, Dr. Johnson will be allocated a couple more parking spaces than Dr. Smith.
I just don't know how that works operationally. So, anyway, it's bringing it up for something to maybe take, think about when we're issuing this.
And we can take a look at that and amend, amend it as needed. We're talking with staff. We can do that.
Any other Commissioner questions? Commissioner Kleiman?
To the point you just made about employee parking, I think that might be the component that's worth focusing on in terms of developing some kind of parking management plan where the employees, for the most part, park off-site, you know, maybe in a private contractual agreement with, you know, one of the nearby Lexus or Fletcher Jones dealerships, or someplace else that might have an excess of spaces that they're not using. And then, you free up all your existing spaces for, you know, for the patrons of these or, you know, the patients of the individual medical units. I just, I just can't get past that 38. But also, I would agree with you about the, some of the getting into the parking and sort of off as well. There may be some additional things that need to be addressed there.
We have, as I mentioned, with Mr. Light, who's the one neighbor that did raise some questions, we are open to any suggestions that the neighbors would have in terms of how to facilitate additional employee parking and things of that nature. It's, we want, part of the problem is because we're going to have to reconfigure the parking lot because of the needs and the safety issues, we want to do it right. We want to be a good neighbor. So, it's not like we're just saying, hey, we want to park there. If there are options, if some of the off, some of the employee parking can be facilitated by Fletcher Jones over there, or by 1300, which is the building next door, which is where Commissioner Coting is talking about, the driveway comes in and out, we'd be happy to talk to those people and see what we could provide.
Staff, have you looked at the surrounding properties that are there? I don't know if any of those others are underparked that makes it simple on trying to determine that. I mean, I guess moving forward, how, you know, we approved this, 70% needs to be looked at. What happens if 70% then cuts that off and it's, it's full? And then, how does the applicant handle the remaining 30%? They would be allowed to do office at that point, or can they not do office either? And they're stuck with now a significant portion of their property that's, has to be vacant or converted into larger, you know, condos with less tenants? I'm just trying to figure out how, how do we make this work for them, you know, going into the future that is helpful for everyone involved?
Thanks, Chair Wagon. First question about the surrounding uses. I haven't looked to that, to that depth of, you know, their parking requirements, but they are all office buildings around there, just professional offices that I've seen. And so, they wouldn't have an impacted parking rate like a medical use would. So, there's opportunities there, as well as the Fletcher Jones that I've seen as well. As far as negotiation-wise, that, you know, that's something that I can't answer. As far as the 70%, the time when we do the analysis and to answer Commissioner Klostermeyer's question, the math comes out to be, with 70% medical, that 70% medical would require 102 spaces out of 150. So, there, it gives a lot of leeway there with 48 other spaces. And that is based on the parking study, consistent with the rest of the numbers that we've been giving. They're all based on that parking study findings. So, there is leeway for additional parking there. That's why that 70% was deemed appropriate by staff to move forward with. But I believe at the time of the 70% analysis, if there are issues, you know, we can, the applicants can explore different parking management situations, like contracting with, you know, neighboring offices and things like that.
What were the peak demand times?
Peak demand times, as Mr. Bryan said, is throughout the day. Medical, different appointments come in throughout the day. But on the parking study, I saw that the peak number that came out, the highest number that came out was around 11:00 a.m. So, it was around, you know, noon time, middle of the day, where that was the number that came out was the highest on these, on these surveys.
So, could a condition be that the office tenants have to have, you know, the modified work schedules that make that, you know? Maybe their lunch hours are, you know, 10:30 to 12:30, you know, that's, that's a little extreme. But that then makes that, you know, takes that peak period down and then shifts it a little more, if I'm making sense to what I'm saying. But I'm not sure if that's, you know, too restrictive, and I don't like to be restrictive. But if that's helpful, it's possible that tenants could, you know, and that might be all internally managed through that. But, you know, a lot of doctors' offices have an hour period where they go to lunch. And so, if 11 o'clock is that peak time, maybe that could be offset. Just throwing out ideas that could make-
We think that's a good idea. And again, that's going to be part of what the development of the CCNRs is going to be, to help modulate when the traffic is there, when it's not, and what the parking issues are not. Going back to your question, at this point, we're asking for essentially 102 parking spots for the medical and 48 for remaining. If we come up and we're at 120 or something of that nature, obviously, we can't go forward with the medical. We are at 70%, and we're locked in, and we may have to do something simply to get that number down. But there's a, there's a good cushion at 78, I'm sorry, at 70%, which will allow us to come back to the commission, show where it is, work with staff to see what number does actually make sense. So, the initial phase of what we're talking about really doesn't hit those numbers. It's substantially lower than what we're, what ultimately may happen or may not happen.
Commissioner Kettin?
I've got to go back, sorry. Mr. Lee, you used the term "per the parking study," the applicant's parking study. If they go to 70% medical and 30% general office, I don't want you to look at a parking study. I want to know how that faces up against the city code. And I'm not asking you to design or calculate that tonight, but we can't rely on an outside third-party consultant saying, it'll work at 96%. I read this. We have to go to the code. And nobody wants to approve a project that is infeasible from the beginning. They have to rethink it, number one. So, that's something we have to look at. Number two, is the applicant here, or are you just representing him?
Yes, sir. Yes, he is here.
Okay. I just wondered, because you read the conditions. Number 11 says there's no urgent care allowed.
Correct.
And how do, how does the city staff know that when all of a sudden there is an urgent care?
Well, obviously, it's in the conditions, and if we, if we lease it to an urgent care facility, somebody's going to know. The city's going to know because we're going to have to get appropriate permits for that. I mean, if you put an urgent care in, which is essentially also considering a mini-surgery center or something of that nature, we're going to have to take additional steps. And based upon the conditions, those are going to be denied.
Okay, but if you go to a, sorry, skin doctor. They treat us, coming in, spray us and check on, but they also have surgery. They have a little table- us and check on, but they also have surgery, they have a little table in there, they can cut out stuff and sew you up, that's a mini-surgery center, so the staff, when they give a permit for a doctor's office, I don't think they have, they go in and look at, are you gonna do any kind of surgery room stuff, minor surgery, I don't think they do.
Not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Number one, I think that's gonna be hard to manage, the item 13 in here is the applicant shall pay fair share of the conversion of office to medical, what's that fee?
It's calculated by staff, whatever it is we're gonna pay.
You don't even know?
I'm not aware of it because it depends upon how much we convert and how much we don't convert.
Well, I thought it was a per square foot fee.
It very well might be, I do not know that number, but I'm, I'm more than willing to whatever staff tells us is it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner questions? Okay, I will go to take public comment on this item, is there anyone in the chambers wish to comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening Commissioners, thanks for your time this evening.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name, too.
Oh, sorry about that, my name is Jim Light, I'm the owner of the adjacent property to the subject property, and I believe it's the property, property most affected by this application, I am the author of the letter that was sent last night, so I had prepared some notes that I'd like to get to, but I just wanna add a few comments first, if, if I, I think it's appropriate and more pertinent, so first, I appreciate very much all of your concerns about the parking, I have, that is my number one concern as well, so thank you for, for that concern, it's much appreciated, so two things regarding that, I like to deal in facts, and I, I will try and deal in facts, and so first off, relative to the calculation, no disrespect to the staff, but I believe using the 37,515 square feet, if you take 70% of that, it's 26,260, that's 26,000 feet, at five spaces per thousand would be 130, not 102, I did the math really quick over there, I may be wrong, but that's not, so I think it's 130, not 102, just again, trying to deal in facts, secondly, that I'd like to point out, again, dealing in facts, I believe this to be true, as I was told by Mr. Greer, this was true, and if I misunderstood, I apologize, I, I'm just restating what I understood, so the 37,515, or whatever the square footage is that we're using to calculate these number of parkings, is the number of usable square feet of the building, it doesn't include the hallways, common areas, et cetera, that is approximately 5,000 square feet more at 42,600 and change, so the, the parking code, I believe, is designed to be applied to the square footage of the building of, as a whole, not of what is usable excluding the common areas, when I take plans to the city for my building for a permit, I have to justify parking based on the square footage of the whole building, I don't get to exclude hallways, thank you, now to my, just quickly, my pre-arranged comments, as I said, I'm very concerned about the parking availability, as been stated repeatedly, the proposed parking currently doesn't, for its current use, doesn't meet code requirements, under the medical use, there's even a greater deficit, I agree with the Commissioner who said parking codes should be adhered to, I don't, I'm, I'm skeptical of the parking study that 150 spaces or 145 spaces will accommodate, thank you, will accommodate the demand because it's inconsistent with the code, I think the code has a lot of science and study behind it, it isn't just a number, I'm further skeptical of the parking study based on the 37,000 square feet, 37,000 square feet of usable versus the 42,000, including the non-common area difference. If, if, obviously, if you use the 42,000 square feet, that's about 5,000 square feet more, so at five spaces per thousand, that's an additional 25 parking places that would be needed, so even grows the deficit further.
If you could just...
Wrap it up? I'm wrapping it up, you got it.
All right, cool, thanks.
So, I'm, I have significant, significant concerns at this time, I haven't had time to review the, the staff report and the reports in detail, I received the notice of this application just last Tuesday, so it's been a week and a day or two, so without me having more time to delve into it and study it, without that opportunity and without other parties in the neighborhood having that opportunity, I'm not in favor of it, would encourage it, I would encourage it to be deferred for the parties to study it more and come back to it, if we can't defer it, then I have no choice but to, to, to support denial of the application at this time without further time to review it, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Chair, could I address the speaker briefly?
Yes, yes, you may.
I just, two quick questions, if you don't mind.
Of course.
The first one being, under the current use, and I don't know if the building is full, if the tenants, you know, are, are there or not there, what the situation is, but are you currently experiencing an overflow and parking off of their site on your property?
We are not.
You're not, do you, just in, in witnessing what's going on on that property, is it underparked? Is it, is it, you know?
I'd say it's appropriately parked.
Okay, and then the applicant's consultant mentioned that you had had some conversations, and I thought maybe it was alluding to the fact that there was some discussion and potential agreements, things that you were amenable to, but it sounds like maybe that was an overstatement.
No, I, I, you, you, the key word that you said there was potential, we discussed some alternatives and some accommodations that could be done, I'm willing to consider, but again, I just, having a week and, and I just talked to the consultant today, so I've had a mount, mere, you know, subsequent to that conversation in this meeting, a mere hours, just not enough time for me to digest and consider what we discussed, so am I just saying absolutely no to it at this point in time? No, I'm open to solutions, if there's appropriate solutions there, I'm willing to consider them, I'm not just a flat-out no at this point in time, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
You got it, thanks, Chair.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other public comment? Being none in the room, how about online, on Zoom?
Nobody online, Chair Wigan.
Okay, I, then we'll bring it back to staff and I think rebuttal from the applicant if they had any further comments.
Thank you, as I think Mr. Light indicated, you know, we are willing to work with him and he's willing to work with us, so I think that's important, I think we're also willing to work with staff, this is just the first step in getting this process going, the traffic study, the parking study have been going on for, oh, I wanna say eight to nine months as we've worked it out with staff to, to get this thing resolved, so to go forward tonight still allows both the commission and the neighbors the opportunity to comment on this, to modify this as we go along, and to make sure that we are as close to, to compliance as we possibly can be while looking out for the safety of the, of the visitors and things of that nature, so I would just urge you to vote yes and approve this tonight, and allow us to go on and work with the staff, work with the planning commission, and work with the neighbors to come up with a final resolution that makes sense.
Commissioner Kleiman?
So I would just say, I'm supportive of the conversion, I understand the need for, for diversification and, and, you know, condo-type product there instead of what maybe, you know, the office space that's there, there's a glut of office space potentially, I understand all that, and again, supportive of the conversion, it, it just feels like there's work to be done, and I don't subscribe to the notion of just approve it and figure it out later, it seems like we should continue it, give them some time to work with staff, to close the gap on that deficit, to work with the neighboring property owners slash owners, and come back when it's a little more fully baked, so that we aren't, you know, taking some chances on some, some number crunching and things that just aren't quite adding up, that's my personal take.
If I may, if I may respond?
Chair, I, I think it's appropriate.
There's only so much we can do, which is why we're asking for the conditional use permit, physically, that space is what it is, it was designed in 1978 for subcompact cars, it was not designed under the current rules, so we will, if, if that's the will of the commission to go back and take a look at it, we obviously will, we'll work hard to, to address those numbers, but I'm, I'm not very optimistic that the physical numbers can change significantly, I don't think we're gonna ever hit 38, get an additional 38 cars in there.
So to that, I would just say, you know, maybe it's a partial conversion rather than full conversion, or, you know, there's a, there's a condition that requires you to have off-site parking again for employees, or, but rather than us trying to do that from the dais, it just feels like it'd be better suited for you to figure out and come back, but...
Well, it's just, that's why we put the 70% in there, is so that we hit that mark, and then we, then if we can't go any further, we can't go any further, and that's why we put that in there is to protect everybody and make sure that we're in compliance.
Just again, I'd rather, rather see that vetted upfront, I'm only one person up here.
Commissioner Kleiman, or Chair Wigan, if there are no more questions of the applicant, then perhaps we could decide whether...
Yeah, I might have some more questions, and maybe Commissioner Klostermeyer, do you...
I had a question of staff, if...
Yeah, and that, and that's appropriate right now as well.
I would assume, over the years, as parking requirements in the code have changed, there's probably a number of other properties around the city that would run into an issue like this, I guess I'm just curious, from staff's perspective, why you are supportive of this, obviously, you put this in front of us because you vetted it and you support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Klostermeyer, we're supportive with the condition that, that the new parking study will be done when they hit, after six months, and they're, they're actually occupied up to 70%, that's, that's why we're supportive of it, because there will be another parking study, without that condition, we probably would not recommend approval for this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kenny?
You may wanna ask, I don't, by the way, calculation, I'm looking at the city code for parking, chapter 21.4, off-street parking, and it specifies on page 72E3, gross floor area, that's how you reference and measure calculations for parking, gross floor area, the building, not the hall, including hallways, so Mr. White is totally correct, I don't feel this application is ready for our consideration tonight, there's too many unanswered questions, if it comes forward, I will not support it because of the 25 to 35% reduction in parking, and I don't like the, the staff condition that goes on, that a study would come later to the staff, I think this is too important, it should come back to the commission, and if this goes for a continuance, and third, I feel giving a 25, 30, pick a percent discount, that hurts other existing medical facilities that didn't, may not have gotten that kind of a discount of parking, and it's going to impact the neighbors, so those are my comments.
Chair Wigan, if I may, if, if we don't have any further questions of the applicant, then we can go ahead and deliberate, but if we could just focus on getting those questions asked of him and then move forward with the deliberation, that would be helpful for the organization of it.
Sure, so I'll, I guess I'll close the public hearing, staff, you know, do, do you wanna respond to any of that? Is there a way to find more parking there? I guess, is there a lower threshold that the commission might be satisfied with if 70%? I guess, I guess my concern is how does it all work for the applicant if we look at 70%, and it's, it's right on the money, but he designs it in a way that has a lot of, you know, open area vacant tenants in there, or not tenants, but space that never got built out, you know, does that, does that map out for the applicant? I, I guess that would be the confusion that I would have, and, and, yeah, Mr. Schneider?
Sure, Chair Wigan, first, before I directly respond to your question, I just wanna clarify, because there's been a lot of discussion about gross square footage and the net square footage, and this is a PC text, and so in that case, we don't look at the direct zoning code section itself, the, the PC text prescribes what we use, and in this case, it prescribes we use the net area, which does include, exclude, I should say, stairs, elevators, mechanical rooms, and then in terms of the overall square footage of the building, and Mr. Lee could probably clarify, but we check with the tax assessors, that's what we use as our, as our ground truth, and the building is a little bit over 40,000 square feet, I believe it's previously, or might even be currently, in real estate marketing material be at 42,000 square feet, but that's, that's not a validated number that we rely on, that was purely for marketing purposes, so I just wanna clarify, the building is approximately 40,000 square feet, the net area is 37.5 roughly, in terms of your question, you know, we picked the 70% because we wanted to make sure we could ground-truth this, we didn't wanna see it approved right away, and not have any checks and balances in place, and also importantly, the six months, and so it wasn't simply allowing them to convert and doing a study right away, we want them operating for a significant period of time, and I think both the percentage, the 70%, and the period of time before we study, they're both at your discretion, and so if you were so to choose, those could be augmented, either the percentage lowered, or the period of time extended, and I also think it would give the neighboring properties an opportunity to weigh in if they are seeing anything out of the ordinary in terms of parking, spillover parking, certainly we would encourage them to reach out to us during that period, the intent is to not ever get to the point where there's spillover parking, that, that was the intent with the 70%.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I see where some of our Commissioners are, you know, worried about, you know, there's no potential parking management plan that's identified, but what, I mean, what would, what would it just look like at 70% if you just took, instead of lowered that, you know, let's say you wanted 100%, but we just went straight up 70% and, and built it out that way, I, I guess what I'm just not seeing how the, the future of it looks, I mean, you, you allocate so many spaces in that building for tenants, and you only occupy 70%, well, there's 30% that you've built for, but it's just sitting vacant, like, how does that work for moving forward, that will just, in perpetuity, after that study, it comes back saying 70% is the max, we can't have any more in there, does it go to just vacant, and, or, or can they re-convert it and rebuild it, and, you know, I, I just, as a, if I were the owner, I don't know how it all works, it seems costly to, to gamble on that working out, and then if it doesn't, then you've gotta take all your tenants that are in there and say, up, back to the drawing board, we've gotta reconfigure the whole property, and then, or put it, the rest into commercial, or just, you know, regular type of commercial property, so I, I don't, I guess I'm, I'm confused on how it all would work.
Thank you, Chair Wigan, so the, if it was a 70% cap, it would be medical office up to 70%, and that remainder 30%, they would be allowed to be just general office use?
So they would just leave that vacant until then?
It, it would be general office, so if they had a tenant, say, a real estate company that just wants to use it for just office purposes, then they would be allowed to use it, they're, it's built, it's entitled, they have those rights to, to use that extra square footage, that 30% square footage, but it has to be for general office, it cannot be for medical use.
Gotcha, so then if the report comes back, all clear, 30% can continue medical, they'll, you know, down the road, kick out those real estate offices per se, and then put in the medical, because they feel that it'll work.
Correct.
All right, staff, anything else? All right, Commissioner Klostermeyer?
Yeah, I think any way that you look at this, there's a parking deficit out there, these tables make it very clear, you know, for whatever mix of use you have between medical and professional office. medical and professional office. Um, I mean, in my mind, there's two options. You condition it as you have and do a parking study that proves that maybe the code is asking for too much parking. Um, or, uh, the owner builds structured parking out there to add the parking stalls, which is very expensive to do. Um, that might be something that they consider. Um, I'm also hearing that there is a neighboring property owner that's open to some form of agreement. I don't know what that would look like. Um, in my mind, I think there's something here that can work. I don't, I don't know that we have that in front of us tonight, but I don't think that this is something that we should flat-out deny. I think it's maybe something that we just need to go back to the, the drawing board on and think about.
Yeah, the sense I'm getting from the commission is that you'd like to continue the item to have a little bit more study. Is the applicant, maybe I can ask, reopen the public hearing here for a second and ask if, uh, if sensing what I see with the commission, if, if you're okay with that, how long you think you need.
We, we, obviously, we'd like to get it done tonight, but if that's the sense of the commission, uh, we're very happy to go back, meet with staff, work with staff, and get to a point where we hopefully can come up with a more comfortable proposal for you guys. Absolutely.
Commissioners, do you think that includes some type of parking management plan? I mean, we probably should direct staff on some, uh, discussions. Otherwise, they might just come back and say, well, we, we think what we presented last time was good, and you might have a full commission here and we'll vote to support it. But I don't know if, since we have the opportunity in front of us, if the commission wants to weigh in on those for future discussions.
Okay. I'll make a comment on that. If, if we determine that this is going to be continued, I'd recommend less than 70%, more like 50 or 60%. I'd recommend accurate calculations on size of this building and size of the rentable square footage and what form we're using, what calculations. Number three, I'd like to see revised site plan accurately, not speculative. Um, there's more than one neighbor across the street. There's an adjacent neighbor right next to them. Yeah, there ought to be, I mean, you contacted that one gentleman, Mr. White, today. Excuse me.
Well, we just got his letter to, yesterday, sir, to be fair about it.
I mean, yesterday, excuse me.
We didn't get the...
Just bad. I think you need to really do your homework. I think staff, we, uh, any kind of a study should come back to the commission, not leave it at the staff. We'll take the bullet if we don't think it works. But, um, I think we're cramming too much in here with too little space. We have enough medical office parking lots that are overflowed because people stay longer. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Rosin.
If the applicant's willing to give staff and, and take a look at this, to have a fully baked situation to bring before us, where, where these items are addressed, seems like the appropriate way to move forward at this time.
Commissioner Kloszremeyer. I'll close the public hearing unless you wanted to ask more questions and of the applicant. Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kleiman, I'm so sorry. I was looking at her and then I, I, my bad.
I'm gonna leave that alone. Um...
Chair Wagen, if I may, just really quick. If, if we are looking at a continuance, which reading the tea leaves, that might be the direction, then we would just leave the public hearing open?
Okay. Go with that. No, leave it open. Commissioner Kleiman. Sorry.
I just wanted to add that, um, I like the creativity that, of staff coming up with this check-in point. And, um, you know, I, I feel like the 70% is somewhat arbitrary, but I understand what you're trying to accomplish there. I will say that, um, from a, from a business management or organizational perspective, it, it sounds like a nightmare. You know, having half the project be medical and, and part of it be, uh, existing office use and, um, you know, dealing with tenancy on one side and, uh, condo ownership on the other. It just, and then the six-month period, I think, is, is difficult as well. If you have new businesses, you know, new medical coming in and as opposed to moving from an existing space and just, you know, transferring existing, um, patients to the new location. If you have a new business, that takes time to establish. I don't think you can expect even six months in to have, you know, a, a fully occupied practice. Um, but, you know, that's just my take, um, for what it's worth. But I, I would go ahead and, and make a motion to continue this item and, um, you know, have everybody kind of address all the things that we've discussed tonight, for, um, applicant to work with staff, for staff to kind of work out some of the math. It does seem, as Commissioner Kloszremeyer said, you know, even if you back out some of the other portions and you're talking about some, uh, ratio of one use to the other, that there's still some math that doesn't add up there. So address those things, address, um, neighboring property owners. I, I think, I, I would agree that the, um, parking structure is going to be too costly to probably substantiate the, the conversion to begin with. I understand that the whole purpose of this is, is to get, uh, higher, you know, rate of return on the property. So I think it just needs a little more time and massaging and, and maybe, like I said, the parking management plan with some off-site agreement in place or, you know, or close to being in place, at least that's, you know, mostly proposed and part of our packet might be the direction you go. But I'll leave that to all of you and leave the motion on the table for someone to second or not.
Yeah, just on, on our agenda here, sort of the schedule that staff provided, well, June 17th, planning commission meeting is canceled, um, and then July 8th is the next available. It seems fairly light. Um, Simone, do you think that that would be a date to continue to, based on what you're hearing? Or do you think we should just leave it up to the applicant to, to decide and work with you down the road?
Thank you, Chair Wagen. It, um, just looking at the, the applicant, looks like we, if we want to continue to a date certain to July 8th, I think it'll be acceptable. We just, we'll rely on the applicant to work with staff here diligently in the next two weeks to get all these items resolved. If not date certain, then we'll just do a renotice. But I think, I think that's okay to go ahead and just go ahead and do it to a date certain July 8th.
If Commissioner Kleiman would like to add that to your motion for that date, then that would be great.
I'll go ahead and add that to my motion.
Perfect. And a second, please.
Oh, second.
All right. We'll call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
If, uh, everyone just kind of worked together on that and tried to get where we need to be for July 8th, that would be great. And, uh, you know, Mr. Greer, maybe work with some of the other tent, neighboring businesses.
We'll definitely reach out, sure.
And see if there's any, you know, interest in perhaps a parking management study too. That would probably be a good idea.
We'll definitely reach out. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, great. Okay, that was our only item on public hearing, and we'll move on to, um, staff and commissioner items. Um, that would be, uh, motion for consideration, reconsideration. And seeing none, item five is report with the community development director or request for matters which a planning commission member would be like, be placed on a future agenda. Um, Simone, if you want to give a report?
Thank you, Chair Wagen. So just a brief report. You do have a tentative agenda, uh, tentative of schedule in front of you, and so I just want to kind of go through it. So next Tuesday is our city council meeting, June 8th. There's a couple items on the agenda of worth to, um, monitor. We're, we're going to provide an update to the city council on our housing element. We're making some progress on the housing element. We got some, um, comments from the city council at the last meeting or last month. So we're going to provide just a progress report to the council. And in addition, we have, we do have an item on the agenda for Tuesday. These are these, um, emergency temporary use permits. This is all that outdoor dining that you see throughout town. Um, we're going to have a conversation with our city council and propose to extend those, um, for an additional 90 days so we can get through the summer season with the, the restaurants. So that's for next Tuesday. Um, as Chair Wagen talked about, we are canceled for June 17th. We have no items for that day. We will have on June 21st, which is a Monday, a virtual workshop, public workshop on the housing element, sharing with the community where we're at and some of the updates. Um, and then the next, um, time we're going to reconvene will be on July 8th for a planning commission hearing. Looks like we have three items for that, um, meeting. We do have the election of officers. We do that every year starting in July, so it'll be the election of officers. Um, as you heard earlier, um, my director's determination has been appealed, um, so we're going to place that on the agenda for your consideration. And, um, in addition, we have tonight's, um, item for the 1,400 Bristol, was it 1,400? Yeah, Bristol. Um, that'll be, hopefully it'll come back. If it does, if it's not ready, we'll put an item on the agenda to continue it further. Um, and that is all I have. Thank you.
When we did, when council discussed the reconfiguration or the, the continuation of the dining and the public spaces, uh, is there going to be down the road at some point a discussion on parking? I mean, well, well, parking's kind of changed over the years. I'm not sure if it relates to what we just discussed, but maybe at least on a restaurant, but maybe it does. I, I, I'm just curious what that discussion looks like moving forward at the council level.
So we have, um, already spoken to the council, and would they have directed us to go ahead and do a parking study? So we're actually in the process. Matthew Schneider, our principal planner there, is leading that effort. So we are looking at our parking code. Um, there is the gig economy with DoorDash, Uber, and Lyft, and how does that affect our parking standards, curb management. It's a, it's a, it's a very intensive study, so it's going to take us some time to get that done. We're using an outside, a couple of outside consultants to help us. So we are in the process of studying that. With these outdoor restaurants, our proposal is for the city council, and the agenda was published today, is that we're going to bridge it for another 90 days. And if, if a restaurant wants to continue with outdoor dining, they're going to submit an application for a limited term permit. And that application will be reviewed by all the city departments, um, including community development, public works, and the fire department. And if there is a restaurant that would like to continue with outdoor dining, it'll go through a public hearing process, which will, they'll be noticing of 300-foot radius around the restaurant to the surrounding, um, businesses. And so that'll go, uh, the public hearing will be at the zoning administrator level. Um, and of, of course, it can be called up for review by the planning commission or appeal to the planning commission, but it's all going to be done at the ZA level. Um, and that's how we're going to kind of bridge these outdoor dining establishments until we can get the parking study updated, resolved, and, uh, approved by the city council.
Great. Thanks for that detail. And then I guess on the item we just heard, what's, if, would, would you guess that those numbers would be reconfigured, you know, in medical or, you know, o, office space? Or would you think it's mostly geared towards restaurants and things like that?
I'll turn to Mr. Schneider there on the medical office.
We are still in the preliminary phases, but the indication from the consultants are that there will be some reduction, just sort of in the paradigm shift that Simone alluded to with Uber, Rideshare, things along the, that nature. Um, it is shifting. Um, and telemedicine is another, just thinking of the item before us tonight. So I, I don't know if it'll be a radical shift, but we are anticipating that there will be, um, several updates to the parking ratios in the code.
Cool. All right. Any questions for, uh, yes, Commissioner Kenny?
Thank you. I read the paper about the Fun Zone. Any idea what the new owners have in mind other than paint and, and varnish?
Um, I, we are working to try to get a conference call to kind of talk about their ideas, but what I've heard is that they want to preserve what's there and enhance what's there. They don't want to, uh, let, tear it down and build condos. They don't want to tear it down and do something else. They want to preserve what they have.
Any other commissioner questions? Okay. Uh, any, uh, members of the audience want to comment on that? Mr. Mosher.
Yeah, I, I just noticed on the tentative meeting schedule, several things related to the housing element. That's supposed to be one of the biggest items before the public at the moment, trying to deal with our RENA allocation. And, uh, I looked at the Newport Together website this afternoon. I saw nothing about the fact that there was a housing element workshop coming up. So, uh, perhaps that and the fact that there's going to be a study session next Tuesday needs more publicity on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Okay. Any, uh, requests for excused absences by the commission? Commissioner Kloszremeyer?
I cannot attend July 8th.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We're adjourned.